Awards and recognition. Alrighty, good evening. I'd like to call this City Council meeting on September 3rd to order, and I'd call on Ward 8 for the invocation.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Lord God, we give thanks for the privilege to serve the citizens of this community, and we would be remiss if we did not ask for your presence to rest upon us in our decision-making. We ask for your wisdom to guide us, we ask for understanding into your perfect plan, and finally, we ask for courage to execute what we know is right. And I also ask your richest blessing upon those present here tonight and those listening. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call on the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smalley. Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Lumberger.
Here.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Handy.
Present.
And we do have a quorum.
Alrighty, item five, awards and recognition. Hopkinsville Fire Department, I call on Chief Futur to come to the front. We can do.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a few things to do tonight. First off is a promotion of Lieutenant Bobby Hoag. Just want to step forward here. Lieutenant Hoag has been with us for six years with the city. He has received several awards since being with us, including Rookie of the Year, Firefighter of the Year. He has completed his Fire Officer II, his Fire Instructor, his Advanced EMT, and ROPTEC. He is being pinned tonight by his children, Trenton and Lala, and probably helped by his wife, Kristen.
Alrighty, raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
Bobby Hoag. As a citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the United States of America, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform to the best of my ability the duties of lieutenant for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and that will support, protect, and preserve life and property of the citizens of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. So help me God.
Okay. Turn around. Turn around here. Don't stick him too far.
Alright, next we have a retirement of Lieutenant Spence Sal. Come on up here, Spence. Spence spent 20 years with the Fire Department. He received lots of achievements through his career, including firefighter, one and two, AEMT, hazmat, IFSAT company officers, inspector one and two, driver operator. His fitness award every year. One of Spence's big things with us is he completed the stair climb, the 9/11 stair climb, 13 consecutive times in Nashville. And I will read his plaque here, and then the mayor will present it. Thomas Spence Sal, Lieutenant, 25 October 2004, August 1st, 2024. Presented to Thomas Spence Sal in recognition of and appreciation for 19 years, nine months of loyal and faithful service. Your dedication and devotion to the Hopkinsville Fire Department has contributed immeasurably to saving lives and protecting citizens. We are proud of your accomplishments throughout your career. On behalf of the citizens of Hopkinsville, we thank you, City of Hopkinsville, Hopkinsville Fire Department, Christian County EMS. No, I don't think so.
Careful. Got to save her. Save her, Mayor, save her.
I can't see her out. Alrighty. Alrighty, we'll move right on into item six, public comments. If anyone has a public comment, would like to speak, please come to the microphone. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address, please. Ms. Cronin.
I'm Diane Cronin Turner, 26 Harding Place. I am coming to you today for the Nature Fest that will be happening on September 21st from 1:00 to 5:00 o'clock. You have a flyer, so we invite everyone to come out. We are still planning. We've got a lot of stuff set up, so we asked you to come out and just support this event. As usual, the mayor will be there on the 13th.
Yes, ma'am.
He's coming out the 13th with the judge, and they're going to do a proclamation on Nature Fest week, month. Nature Fest month, I think. So we want everybody to come out, and they will be out on the 13th. We will have 140-some children from Todd County, fifth graders, that would be doing environmental in the classroom on that day. So we asked you if you want to come out to the proclamation. It'll be at 9:00, 9:30 that morning.
Yes, ma'am.
And everybody just asks you to come out, support the event. Jeffers Ben, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jesse Dooley. I'm here on behalf of the Red Oak Street, trying to get it paved. We've tried several times. I understand the city says this, the counties and the county says it, cities. So it's a back-and-forth situation. We got flooding at the end of the street. It's getting worse. We're getting potholes. Just request something be done.
Yes, sir.
And Natasha has some, you got some videos?
Yes, I had pictures and I have to share with the city council. I'll email it to you guys.
Yeah.
Okay?
Please email them, too.
Mr. Jesse, which street did you say?
Sorry.
Which street are we talking about?
Red Oak Street.
Red Oak Street. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keller.
Good evening, Alyssa Keller, at 122 Moreland Drive, but specifically from 217 East 9th Street tonight. And really, I just wanted to come and thank you, Mayor Knight, for your contribution, your support of the museum this summer. We had Mayor Knight's museum days all summer, starting the second week of June through the last week of August, and it made possible for us to allow students of all ages to tour the museum, visit us for free all summer long. We had close to 200 kids that came through this summer, and I know some of them never would have made it without that. We also hosted, I think it was 10 Museum Mondays, and had special programming that our learning coordinator Brett Pritchett did about different topics and themes. The Hopkinsville Fire Department came out and supported one of those. But while kids were in, we had them very creatively sign this big poster for you, Mayor Knight, so.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There you go. You can paint that up somewhere.
I will.
Very much appreciate your support in that. And also, just in case you haven't seen it, the museum is hosting a gala on Saturday, September 21st. Go to Nature Fest and then spend your day with Jeffers Ben, and then come spend your evening with us. The gala will support the museum and all that we do, and the more support we get that way, the less we have to come back and ask for it here. So please, if you are available at night, we'd love for you to come. I mean, there's enough people here for a table. If you would like to get a table together, that would be great. The gala will, it's kind of inspired by the Met Gala in New York City. We'll have a big entrance and a cocktail hour. Then we'll have dinner outside with a jazz band playing. It's going to be a lot of fun. So I hope you will support us in that as well. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Keller.
Alrighty. Floor's still open for public comments. How you doing, sir?
Doing well, and you?
Doing great.
I'm Damian Young. I'm one of the electrical inspectors here in the city and the county as well. And it's kind of come to my intention that inspection fees all over Western Kentucky are kind of all over the place. And I'm kind of on a journey to try to kind of straighten some of that up, if possible. I may hit some roadblocks, but I brought some examples of some of the other municipalities and stuff. And I also brought a first page of kind of a proposal of what I'm proposing. I don't know how you all would have any questions about it until you kind of look at it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if you'd like to make passes on these out?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Yeah, Brittany's got a copy.
No, you're good. Thank you.
What we'll do with this, Mr. Young, is we'll study it, and I'll get back with you and talk to CDS and them about it. And the council will talk about it. We'll go from there.
That sounds perfect.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else from public comments this evening? Alrighty. No other. We'll move into item seven, Mayor's comments. I'd like to say a big shout out to Elvis Williams. He retired last Thursday, 30 years with the city of Hopkinsville. He's done a great job for us out at cemeteries and Public Works. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Williams for what he done. Don't want to forget about the alien invasion that's coming up here shortly. We had a good thing over there at the museum about it and out at the tourism the other night, but it's still got a big thing coming up at In Kelly over that. We have the Chamber breakfast on 9/12. I want everyone to try to come about and see that. They'll have me, Judge Gillum, and Jackie, and a couple of others on the stage talking about community events and things that are going on. We have the senior games. Anybody wants to come out to that on 9/25. Ms. Rudd and Rachel are getting that underway, and Toby over at Parks and Recs. Dancing with the Stars will be this weekend on 9/7, so if any of you are dancing, that's great. I got two left feet. I don't have to. On that, but please come out and support them at the Al Hambr on that. I'd like to give a great big thank you to all our city employees for all they did during summer salute. They got out in that heat and worked and done a great job. Toby and him, Public Works, everybody, the finance team, the whole staff really gave it their all to make sure we pulled it off. And it was really good. The powwows this weekend, if everybody wants to try to get out to that. Got a big thing this weekend at the stadium, Hop Town County game this weekend. Me and Travis made it out to the Mayfield game the other night. We was glad to see them play. We'd liked a little better turnout, but that's the way it goes. Hop Town Idol is on the 13th, so if you can sing, get with Toby and him, so y'all can get out there and do that. Don't worry about that. I can't carry a tune in a bucket. So we're good shape there. Alrighty, that's the end of Mayor's comments, and I need a motion.
Yes, sir, I got you. I know, again, we have online guests with us tonight, so I'd like to make the motion. We move Ordnance A and Resolution A to where we currently are on the agenda.
Need a second.
Second.
Mr. Mark.
Second.
Mr. Mark. Alrighty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alrighty, that passes. Let's move right along to that there to the... Okay. Let's see. Mr. Franklin's up first. We're, yeah, right, we're going to be right, Ordnance... No, Mr. Franklin up will be...
Oh, the cable.
Cable, cables.
Cable authority.
Cable authority first on that, okay?
Hi, it's Linda Aine. I got bumped out of the meeting, but I'm back on.
Okay. Alrighty. Alrighty, Ordnance 26-2024 Charter Cable Services on that, if we can get, go with that.
In ordinance governing a franchise to Spectrum Mid-America LLC, which is an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications Incorporated and locally known as Spectrum or its permitted successors or assigns charterer franchisee for the provision of cable service in the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky and setting forth conditions accompanying the grant of franchise and providing for the regulation and use of said franchise. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that Spectrum Mid-America LLC, which is an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications Incorporated and locally known as Spectrum or its permitted successors or assigns franchisee, is hereby accepted and approved for a non-exclusive 10-year franchise for the operation of cable service within the confines of the city of Hopkinsville based upon and subject to the terms, specifications, restrictions, and obligations set forth in this ordinance and applicable law. General provisions titled, this ordinance shall be known and may be cited as a charter cable service franchise ordinance herein after ordinance or franchise. Definitions sets forth definitions of words used in the ordinance. Rights and privileges of franchisee sets out the rights and privileges granted to franchisee. Franchise area describes the geographic area covered by the franchise. Duration of ordinance describes the term of the franchise and franchisee's obligations to the city after the franchise terminates. Police and other powers establishes the city is not waiving any police or other governmental powers in the ordinance. Notices sets forth addresses for notification purposes. Indemnification and insurance sets franchisee's insurance requirements and franchisees' indemnification to the city for damages. Rights of individuals sets forth standards for protecting the rights of individuals. Public notice provides minimum public notice of any public meeting relating to the franchise shall be prescribed by Kentucky law. Severability sets forth a severability clause with respect to terms of the ordinance. Service availability provides the franchisee shall provide cable service throughout the franchise area pursuant to the provisions of the franchise. Construction and technical standard sets forth standards for design, construction, operation, and maintenance cable service and sets forth franchisee's responsibilities with respect to the use of the right of ways and franchisee's release of the city for any requirements imposed under the ordinance. Customer service sets forth customer service standards consistent with 47 CFR in section 76.309c and refers to Exhibit B to the ordinance, which states, "Franchisee currently maintains an office in the city, and the parties agree that the office is adequately staffed to receive bill payments, exchange equipment, and respond to customer inquiries. Franchisee shall maintain an office in the city through at least December 31st, 2028 for such services. In the event of an office closure or relocation outside of the city after December 31st, 2028, franchisee shall provide written notice to the city and must continue to have the capability to conveniently service its subscribers. Needs by providing or contracting with third-party agents to provide the opportunity for subscribers to exchange cable service equipment and make payments in the city during normal business hours. By way of example, in the city, in this context may include mail delivery of new equipment to a subscriber's home along with drop ship packaging from a local shipping store such as FedEx or UPS or returning the old equipment. Payment to the city during any period of time during which the city opts to forego collecting a franchise fee in lieu of participating in the multi-channel video programming and service tax. Scheme under KRS 136.600 at SEC, franchisee shall not be required to pay franchise fees. If at any time the city opts to exercise its constitutional right to collect franchise fees, franchisee's first franchise fee payable under this ordinance shall be paid to the city 90 days after the city gives written notice to franchisee that the city has opted to exercise its constitutional right to collect franchisee fees. Such franchise fees shall be in an amount equal to 5% of franchisee's annual gross revenues. In the event any other cable franchise or authorization to provide video service provides for a lesser franchise fee than this franchise. Franchisee's obligation to pay a franchise fee under this franchise shall be reduced by any equivalent amount. Gross revenues, showing all revenues as determined in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles actually received by franchisee from subscribers residing within the service area for cable. Services purchased by such subscribers on a regular reoccurring monthly basis, gross revenue shall not include, 1, any taxes, fees, or assessments collected by franchisee from subscribers for pass-through to a government agency, including the franchise fee and FCC user fee; 2, bad debt; 3, credits; refunds and deposits paid to subscribers for any exclusions available under applicable state law. Transfer of ownership or control sets forth requirements for transfer of control. Records, reports, and maps sets forth requirements for franchisee's production of records and documents for inspection and copying by the city. Community programming sets forth the requirements for the educational and government access channel. Emergency alert override sets forth standards for an emergency alert override system. Administration and regulation, performance evaluation sessions authorizes the city to conduct performance evaluations of the cable service. Violation notice and opportunity to cure sets forth standards for providing notice for violations of the franchise and allowing for an opportunity to cure. Revocation sets out procedures to be followed in the event of revocation. Equal protection sets out equal protection provisions of the ordinance. Dispute resolution sets forth the standards for resolution of issue and disputes. Modification provides the franchise may be amended or modified only by a written instrument executed by both parties. Waiver provides failure on the part of the city or the franchisee to enforce any provision of this franchise shall not be construed as a waiver of the right to compel enforcement of such provision or any other provision. Miscellaneous contains miscellaneous provisions relating to the execution and construction of the franchise. Binding effect provides the franchise's bonding on each party and their respective successors and assigns. Compliance with state and federal laws provides the franchisee shall comply with all state and federal laws and regulations. Integration provides as ordinance sets forth the entire agreement between the parties respecting the subject matter hereof. Governing law provides the franchise shall be governed by and construed in accordance with the law of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Publication provides the franchisee shall assume the cost of posting and publishing its franchise.
Alright, I need a motion.
Motion.
Now I got Dawn, and then I've got Travis. Any discussion? See, now I call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Lumberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
And that passes on second reading.
Alrighty, we move down to item 12, Resolution 04-2024, Ascend Element, reimbursement resolution.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, preliminarily approving issuance of revenue bonds and one or more series for the benefit of Ascend Elements Incorporated or an affiliate thereof, authorizing the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of sewage and solid waste disposal facilities agreeing to issue bonds at the appropriate time or times to pay or reimburse the cost of such facilities. Approving a memorandum of agreement with Ascend Elements Incorporated or an affiliate thereof and taking other preliminary actions. Witnesses, whereas Ascend Elements Incorporated, a Delaware corporation or an affiliate thereof, Ascend desires to acquire, construct, install, and equip a new lithium battery precursor cathode active material facility, which will qualify under the code as defined below as a sewage and solid waste disposal facility. Being further described on Exhibit A attached here, too, and to be located at 6505 John Rivers Road, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, 42240, the project. And whereas Ascend is the initial owner and or operator of the project. And whereas Chapter 103 of the Kentucky Revised Statutes, the Act, and the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 is amended, the code collectively authorized the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, the issuer, to defray the cost of the project by issuing one or more series of revenue bonds at the appropriate time or times pursuant to one or more indentures or supplements thereto to be entered into between the issuer and bond trustee, and by learning the proceeds of such series of revenue bonds to ascend pursuant to one or more loan agreements or similar documents or supplements thereto, referred to as herein as a loan agreement or collectively as the loan agreements, to be entered into between the issuer and Ascend. And whereas the interest on one or more series of the revenue bonds may be excludable from gross income for federal and Kentucky income purposes. And whereas discussions have occurred between representatives of Ascend and the issuer regarding the issuance of one or more series of revenue bonds by the issuer and its intention of the issuer, and the issuer agrees with Ascend to issue such revenue bonds upon compliance by Ascend with such reasonable conditions and obligations as the issuer may require and subject to the approval by the issuer of the terms of all agreements, resolutions, and other documents incumbent to such series of revenue bonds. And whereas based upon the estimated cost of the project, the issuer proposes to issue its revenue bonds at such time or times as needed by Ascend and one or more series in an aggregate amount of 320 million, the bonds, to pay or reimburse cost of the project. Including cost incidents of the authorization, sale, and issuance of such series of the bonds or other financing costs, but with such other financing and contributions from Ascend as may be necessary. And whereas each series of the bonds will be payable solely from payments to be made by Ascend pursuant to the corresponding loan agreement and will not be payable from any funds or assets of the issuer whatsoever. And whereas Ascend has represented to the issuer that Ascend will have sufficient financial resources to acquire, construct, install, and equip the project and operate the project throughout the term of such series of the bonds, meeting the obligations of each applicable loan agreement when due. And whereas the issuer proposes to enter into each loan agreement with Ascend with respect to the project at the appropriate times under which Ascend will covenant and agree to pay amounts sufficient to provide for the amount of principal of and premium, if any, and interest on the bonds together with all trustee and paying agents fees in connection with the bonds and any other related charges, as the same come due and payable. And to the evidence of preliminary agreement of the issuer and Ascend with respect to these matters, the party is proposed to enter into a memorandum of agreement substantially informed set forth out in Exhibit B attached here, too. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, incorporation of recitals. The facts and... The facts and recit- recita- yeah, reci- can't even say the word.
Take a breath.
Recitations set out in the recitals of this resolution are adopted incorporated as part hereof and the terms defined in the recital shall have the same meanings when used herein. Section two, public purposes. The issuance of the bonds and the loan of the proceeds thereof to Ascend to finance the cost of the project, as herein provided, will further the public purposes of the Act by promoting economic development, relieving conditions of unemployment, and encouraging the increase of industry within the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Section three, commencement of project. Ascend may initiate the project subject to reimbursement of cost of the project from the proceeds of the bonds, as if and when issued. The issuer assumes no responsibility for the acquisition, construction, installation, equipping, or completion of the project or shall be the responsibility of Ascend. Section four, commitment to issue bonds. The issuer hereby undertakes to issue the bonds and to loan the proceeds thereof to Ascend to finance the cost of the project. The foregoing undertaking is conditional upon compliance by Ascend with such reasonable conditions and obligations as the issuer may require and subject to the approval by issuer for the terms of all agreements, resolutions, indentures, and other documents incident to such bond issuer issues to which the issuer is a party and upon the negotiation of acceptable terms with the purchaser purchases of the bonds and the execution of one or more loan or similar agreements between the issuer and Ascend. Section three, use of bond proceeds. Project cost shall be paid or reimbursed using the proceeds of the bonds, such proceeds to be supplemented by the contributions of Ascend as necessary to complete the project. Each loan or similar agreement governing a series of the bonds shall establish sufficient safeguard to ensure that all money provided by the issuer from the proceeds of the bonds will be expended by way of direct expenditure or reimbursement solely for the purpose of the project. Section six, maximum per amount. The total amount of money necessary to be provided by the issuer through the issuance of the bonds for the payment of reimbursement of the cost of acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of the project will not exceed three-hundred-and-twenty million. Section seven, special and limited obligations. No bond shall, A, constitute a general obligation, debt, bonded indebtedness, or liability of the issuer, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, or any agency or political subdivision thereof; B, pledge the faith or credit of the issuer, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, or any agency or political subdivision thereof, for payment of any principal of, premium, if any, or interest on such bond; or C, give rise to a general obligation or liability of or charge against the general credit or taxing power of the issuer. The Commonwealth of Kentucky, or any agency or political subdivision thereof, no holder or owner of any bond shall have the right to require taxes or excises to be levied by the issuer, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, or any agency or political subdivision thereof, for the payment of any principal of, premium, if any, or interest on such bond. The bonds when issued will be special and limited obligations of the issuer payable solely from receipts derived under the loan or similar agreement for such bond and under any trust estate established by the issuer in connection therewith. The only security pledged for Ascend's obligations under the loan or similar agreement shall be the independent revenues and assets of Ascend as described in each loan or similar agreement. Neither the City Council or the issuer or the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Kentucky will appropriate any funds to fulfill the financial obligations represented by the bonds. No recourse shall be had for the payment of principal of, premium, if any, or interest on any bond or form, any claim based therein or upon any obligation, covenant, or agreement therein, contained against any past, present, or future official officer, member, employee, or agent of the issuer, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, or any agency or political subdivision thereof, as such, either directly or through the issuer, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, or any agency or political subdivision thereof, under any rule or law or equity statute or constitution or by the enforcement of any assessment or penalty or otherwise. And all such liability of such official officer, member, employee, or agent, as such, shall be expressly waived and released as a condition of and consideration for the issuance of the bonds. Section eight, memorandum of agreement. The mayor of the issuer is hereby authorized and directed to execute. The city clerk of the issuer is hereby authorized and directed to assist a memorandum of agreement between the issuer and Ascend substantially in the form of exhibit B attached here too setting forth their preliminary agreements respecting the bonds and the project. Section nine, authorization of all necessary actions. Bond counsel designated the memorandum of agreement is authorized and directed on behalf of the issuer to take any legal action necessary and appropriate in connection with the authorization, issuance, and sale of the bonds. Ascend is authorized and directed to take any other legal action necessary and customary in order to satisfy any prerequisites to the issuance of the bonds. The city attorney is authorized and directed to assist bond counsel and Ascend in this connection. Section ten, public hearing. The mayor or his designate is hereby authorized to conduct one or more public hearings on behalf of the issuer regarding the bonds and the project pursuant to section one forty-seven F of the code. Section eleven, reimbursement. This resolution is intended to be a declaration of official intent regarding the reimbursement of project expenditures within the meaning of section one point one fifty through two of the income tax regulations issued under the code. The total amount of the project expenditures subject to reimbursement hereunder shall be limited to three-hundred-and-twenty million. Section twelve, effectiveness. This resolution shall be in full force and effect after its adoption. To the extent any prior resolution, ordinance, or part thereof is in conflict herewith, the provisions of this resolution shall prevail and be given effect.
All right. Okay. We need a motion and a second on this?
Terry.
Second.
Terry and Jamie? Okay. And, all those in favor say aye?
We need, I've got a, I've got a, I've got a question.
I was about to say, let's back up the question.
Yeah, let's back up the discussion because this, this is a lot and it's, I've read through everything that was sent in this and I don't mind telling you, I don't one-hundred percent get it all. This is not what I do for a living and these are numbers. These numbers are well above my head. Uh, I would, I would love to be on a three-hundred-and-twenty million dollar project. Reading through the question I had was actually in section seven, under the special and limited obligations, because it looks like to me, and correct me when I'm wrong, the city is basically issuing, but we're not under any obligation. But where I get a little concerned, and I hope you can straighten me out, is when it says, "The only security pledged for Ascend's obligations under the loan or similar agreements is the independent revenues and assets," because we bonded, I don't know, five, six million dollars. So, the way we pay that is through our taxing authority and that is our revenues that we're getting from Ascend. So, if something was to happen with Ascend, I hope it never does, would those revenues and assets for these bonds trump what the city is expecting to pay the bonds that we are currently using those revenues and assets to pay? I hope that question makes sense. I hope you heard that question.
Yeah, this is Mark. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Make sure I'm audible. Yeah, I think, you can think about it two ways. So first of all, the, the language in paragraph or number paragraph seven is there, the intent is to say that-
Hold on, Mark, they, they turned you down for some reason. We need to turn that up.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Nope, that's good to know. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So the number of paragraph seven, the intent of that section is to say that, to be clear, even though this is a preliminary approval, but make the start from square one, this is not the actual approval of the bond issue. This is a preliminary resolution really designed to secure a tax benefit. Uh, the, it would, we would come back to the city later and ask that the bonds be approved by ordinance. So unfortunately Brittany may have another, you know, long reading for a bond ordinance at some point if it's the council's role, but, uh, section seven is there to make clear that any bonds issued by the city for the benefit of Ascend are payable only with Ascend's money, not the city's money, which is essentially, I think, what you summarized. Um, and, and so whether the bonds are obligations of the city, they're special and limited obligations, is the bond counsel lingo we use, which means they're payable only with monies provided by the bar work. They, and then, and then the city attorney has also worked on, uh, the incentive arrangements with Ascend. Uh, and, and I, and Doug, I'm trying to remember exactly how that, if that arrangement's similar to the others, but in that case, um, I would believe the city incurred debt, uh, which was a general obligation bond payable with a pledge of tax revenues, general tax revenues and taxing power, but had from a budgeting standpoint, uh, you know, planned to pay the debt service for those, uh, that particular bond issue, uh, with most likely, I think, occupational license fees and taxes payable from Ascend, uh, to the city as a result of employees who work at their facility. Uh, so, uh, the, you know, so the, you know, typically, I don't know, what, what would reply in, in terms of order of payment, but typically taxes are, have a greater, um, you know, their occupational license fees and taxes tend to be trust payments where they are due and you can be personally liable if you don't make those payments oftentimes. So I, I sort of see them as separate streams and don't see them necessarily contradicting personally. Um, but, uh, I guess that, that is my answer. There's two different really things. The bonds will be secured, yes, by the payments from Ascend, uh, but those, what specifically is pledged by Ascend, you know, certainly may be ultimately for the bonds different to what it pledges with respect to what it's pledged to secure any obligations it may have with, to the city with respect to its occupational license fees or other matters. If that makes sense, hopefully that's, that's on the, a little bit on the fly, but, but we will have an opportunity to, and this is, let me explain a little bit more of the purpose of this resolution is to, and the city has, has this issue when it issues bonds. Uh, if, when you issue tax exempt debt, uh, one thing you sometimes need to do is you would like to go back and pay yourself back with, with bond proceeds for money you've already spent on your project. In other words, you've been paying cash out of pocket for project cost and you would like to go back and when you borrow, refill your pocket back up a little bit with bond proceeds. The only way you can do that for federal tax purposes is if you have expressed that intention in a written resolution, um, by the issuer, which is in this case is the city, Ascend does, would not have the right to do that or the ability to under the tax code. So this initial resolution is really a means to establish that intent. That's in section, really, when it comes down to, is section eleven of the resolution, which lays out the dollar amount. Um, and so that's, that's the purpose, is to try to reserve the right to capture as many project costs as possible on a tax exempt basis as soon as possible.
Is, is there at any point, I guess, like I say, I don't, it's a lot of words for, for a guy like me right here. Um, with the, with the city kind of being the issuer, understand it, it's different from our, our normal bonds and it's probably why I have more questions about it. Um, is there any point that the city could come back on the hook for this? Because three-hundred-and-twenty million dollars in our current budget is about sixteen years' worth of our budget. And that's, that's a lot of money.
Right. Right now, I'm glad to answer that. So I always say I may be, I mean, I'm the city's regular bond counsel, I'll work on the other bond issues. And I always say I may be a bond lawyer, I'm a Kentucky bond lawyer. I, uh, would not, I would never do anything to put the city at harm or risk financially. I, you know, in my opinion, and I always say this and I say it in front of other clients, now this is something the city does at its, an act of its own goodwill to help a corporate citizen save money. Um, but the city should not do it if it places the city at any risk, because that's not the city's job, right? It's the public funds that would be placed at risk. Um, but in these sorts of arrangements, these are called conduit bonds or, or industrial revenue bonds, uh, they are structured such that the city has no financial risk. Uh, you know, the, the city will not be subject to payment. And to be honest, there are, if not billions, probably trillions of dollars of conduit bonds outstanding all over the country for everything from sports arenas to hospitals to nursing homes, you know, and, and so there's a whole, anything you can do with a conduit bond, someone has financed it, because the, if the tax exempt, uh, financing is available that has been used, because it's usually the cheapest way to borrow. And the, you know, bondholders, the markets, everyone understands that the issuers such as the city are not obligated to make any of these payments or else the whole system would collapse. And it's a very important market for people to reach, you know, access to tax exempt financing. So, what I, what I usually in this comment is, as bond counsel, I will give an opinion personally, uh, that says the bonds are special limited obligations payable with funds from Ascend, not from the city. And if I'm wrong, you can sue me because it'll be addressed to you. We have pretty high, pretty high malpractice coverage because my, you know, my partners aren't always happy I'm in the bond business because we do big deals sometimes. Now, the three-hundred-and-twenty million, uh, won't all happen at once. Uh, these bonds are subject to a limitation that renews annually that the IRS allocates out among states. And so this year, the amount they're hoping to borrow before the end of this calendar year is about seventy-six million dollars. That's all that's available in Kentucky. And that amount will start over January first and they would be eligible to ask for about another hundred and seventy million early in the year and then probably another fifty-six million after July first next year, but they'd have to apply for it. It's not a given. Uh, they're obviously having conversations with the state to try to firm that up if they can, uh, but the resolutions draft to try to capture as much as that as possible for purposes of reimbursement and tax benefit. But, uh, and so, that's all I'll say, that three-hundred-and-twenty million wouldn't happen all at one time. It would probably, if it happens to that amount, it would happen over the course of maybe probably a year and a half or something like that, or maybe a year.
Good. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Franklin? Any more discussion? All right. Call on the clerk. That is just a yea vote. Yep. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Thank you.
We got, we got some more to read here, please, don't we? No, we're good. Okay. All right. Thank you. All righty. Now we're going to move back to, uh, item eight, report from officers and committees on that, and we call on Ms. Melissa Clayton.
All right. So I was asked to give you guys an update on the opioid litigation payments that we've received. Um, just as a refresher, this was a national lawsuits, um, nationwide. Uh, the settlement for these lawsuits resolved over four thousand claims of state and local governments combined. Um, the state of Kentucky was awarded four hundred and seventy-eight million. Fifty percent of that goes to cities and the state is keeping fifty percent in a fund that after you decide how you're going to use your money, you can apply to the state to get more of their fifty percent pot. Um, we currently have received in, um, litigation payments, a total of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Our interest total is twenty-one thousand, eight thirty-seven. But I, what I sent you in the packet was just the slide for last fiscal year. Last fiscal year, we started the fund, the fund had two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight oh two in it. Um, we collected two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-six thousand throughout the year, and we have interest of sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Fund balance at June thirty was four seventy-five, three sixty-four. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have about this fund.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Can you vote? All right. Item eight, ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two-four, twenty-four, a property tax rate per two.
An ordinance providing for making the property tax levy for city purposes for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, for city purposes for fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, there is hereby made a tax levy of twenty-point-nine cents on each one hundred dollars of taxable real property, twenty-three-point-nine cents on each one hundred dollars of taxable personal property, and twenty-five-point-one cents on each one hundred dollars of taxable motor vehicle and watercraft property. Additionally, a tax levy and ad valorem tax of one and one-half cents on each one hundred- cents on each $100 of fair cash value of all unmanufactured tobacco, subject to taxation within the city limits, is imposed upon each establishment, firm, company or corporation handling and processing the same, except as otherwise exempt. And a tax levy and ad valorem tax of four and one half cents on each $100 of the fair cash value of all unmanufactured agricultural products, subject to taxation within the city limits, is imposed upon each establishment, firm, company or corporation handling and processing the same, except as otherwise exempt. All levies herein shall be deposited into the general fund for the general operation of city government. A discount of 2% shall be allowed on all taxes except motor vehicle and watercraft property taxes in the amount of $1 or more paid by October 31st, 2024 and the total tax due shall be collected from November 1st, 2024 through November 30th, 2024. All taxes except motor vehicle and watercraft property taxes levied herewith, which will remain unpaid on December 1st, 2024, shall begin to accrue, attach and be added from said date, a flat penalty of 10% onto the total amount of said taxes then due and payable. Additionally, tax bills not paid before December 1st, 2024 shall have added to them interest at the rate of one half percent per month or fraction of a month until said taxes are paid. The penalty and interest as provided herein shall be added to unpaid taxes and collected by the city. Should the tax herein become delinquent, the city administrator and chief financial officer and/or city attorney are authorized to file suit to collect all delinquent taxes plus court costs and expenses, including a reasonable attorney fee incurred by reason of such delinquency. Section two, if any section subsection sentence clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Right. Motion.
Second.
Got Don, Jamie. All righty. Any discussion? All righty. Seeing no discussion, we'll call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bill.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
And that passes on first reading.
All righty. We move into item 12 municipal orders. Municipal order 25 dash 2024, building permit fee transfers.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the release of all funds currently held in the building permit fees trust account to be paid to Community and Development Services.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
You've got Amy. Who else got that one over? Jamie? Okay. All righty. Any discussion? All righty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All righty. That passes. All righty. Municipal order 26 dash 2024, ARP A Fund Program.
Whereas Hopkinsville City Council authorized up to 64,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds be used to install a sidewalk along Greenville Road from East First Street to Carl Smith Road pursuant to municipal order 22, 2022. And whereas 16,459,39 of appropriated funds have not been spent on said sidewalk project. And whereas all remaining funds should be reclaimed, relocated and design, designated for additional uses as approved by the Hopkinsville City Council. Now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby reclaims all remaining funds designated for the Greenville Road Sidewalk Project pursuant to municipal order 22, 2022 and designates and authorizes said funds be used for the construction of Party Lane Park, also known as Rotary Park at Party Lane.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Got Amy and Steve. All right. Any discussion about this money? All righty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All righty. Municipal order 27 dash 2024, Coach William Falls Memorial Bridge.
Whereas Coach William Falls, who was a legendary basketball coach at Addicks High School and later became assistant basketball coach at Hopkinsville High School, tragically lost his life on December 13th, 1973, when a train struck his car at the tracks on the Fayette Road near Country Club Lane. And whereas the community of the whole has recommended Hopkinsville City Council name the Greenway Rail Trail pedestrian bridge over the Fayette Road in his memory. Now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby names the pedestrian bridge over the Fayette Road as Coach William Falls Memorial Bridge.
So moved.
Second.
Got Steve and Terry. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All righty. We done item 12 already. Executive order, 23 dash 2024 Code Enforcement Board.
Effective immediately, Mark Graham shall be appointed to the Code of Ordinance Enforcement Board to fill the unexpired term of Bertha Wimberly. This term shall expire February 28th, 2025. And we do need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Don, Chuck. All righty. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
Aye.
All righty, got one now. All righty. Item 14 under other. We have any other thing, other business we need to talk about? All righty. Councilmember comments? So councilmember comments? Uh, item 16, Discussion for Economic Development Proposal, KRS 61.810. Need to go into closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Got Travis and Don. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mayor Knight, before we go into closed session, I need to recuse myself from this closed session.
Yes, sir.
Just let the record reflect that it's under KRS 61.8101G.
Yep.